Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Neshamene School Board Director's Meeting of Tuesday, September 14th, 2021. We'd like to open the meeting. Could we have a roll call, please? Mrs. Burns?
Mr. Parentano?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman is absent with prior notice. Ms. Boyle?
Present.
Mrs. Hollenbach?
Present.
Mr. Kowis is absent with prior notice. Mr. Marington?
Here.
Mr. Cirillo?
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan is also absent with prior notice. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Mrs. Burns, may we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Board met in an executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school, safety, and security. Mrs. Burns, are there any announcements this evening?
No announcements.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Dr. McGee, your superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. Since we met last, we opened schools. On September 1st, our kindergarten, grade five and grade nine, had their first experience in their new building. Successful day and a day to orientate themselves without their classmates around to add to the fun. Unfortunately, the first day of school for everybody, well, as you know, was delayed because of severe weather. And then finally, on Friday, September 3rd, we brought K-12 back in its entirety, similar to we did last year. The big difference was that we had attendance similar to pre-pandemic. So if you think about last year, we had roughly 10% of elementary on the livestream, 15% of the middle school on livestream, and then 30% of the high school. Then add to that absentee. That was what school looked like at the end of last year. This year, on the first day of school and continuing throughout, we are somewhere at 5 round numbers percent absent, which is what I would say would be a normal school day pre-pandemic. So Neshamene is back in session, and our schools have attendance similar to prior to our pandemic conditions. So speaking about COVID, we've had a successful opening with that. I just reviewed attendance. As far as those parents choosing to put their children in the virtual academy, similar number, slightly higher to pre-pandemic. We are less than 1% K through 4 students enrolled in the virtual academy, 2% 5 through 8, and also 2% in 9 through 12. That's as of last week. Also, masks have gone OK. We have under 1% masked exceptions K through 12, the majority being them at the high school, of course, which is the largest building. Also, we have spun up our COVID team from last year that meets every morning, the Cabinet, myself, and all the Cabinet members, every morning at 9 o'clock. That'll begin tomorrow to review every case and make sure we are doing what's right for safety and keeping our students in school. We will continue to notify those classrooms where there is a COVID-positive case in it last year. We will not do the school letter. Instead, we will continue to update the dashboard so parents can get the school view. That dashboard is on the district website and can be accessed today. Other than that, it's been an uneventful start of the school year. We're hoping that the levels of the virus stable and drop, and we can go back to even more normalcy. I can say, this is not about how to prevent contracting the virus, but how to prevent being excluded from school. If you are vaccinated, you're not going to be excluded from school if you're a close contact, as per the rules were given to follow for those exclusions. And if you're wearing a mask, if all parties are wearing a mask, there's far less of a chance of you being excluded from school. So those seem to be the two things that will keep students in school, simply by the exclusion rules, regardless of anything else. Back-to-school nights are what's next. We're going to have them as we normally would have them, in-person and live. Elementary is September 23rd, Thursday. I believe Towanka has two days. I'm not sure if the second day is the day before Thursday or Friday. I'm assuming it's Wednesday. Middle school is September 30th, and Neshamene High School will do it on October 7th. The individual start times will come from your principals, so we're looking to have a back-to-school night similar to we did in 2009. Finally, if you haven't noticed, there are some businesses around the area and the nation looking for employees. Neshamene is one of them. It's very difficult to run a school without a full set of staff in certain areas. So we are particularly looking for instructional assistants. If you are interested in being employed, if you're interested in doing volunteer work, we'll actually pay you for it. We need instructional assistance throughout the district that are paraprofessionals that work in classrooms with teachers, with those kids, with special instructional needs to complement the teacher's services. And as you're probably aware, we need bus drivers as well. We can't run a district if we can't get the kids to and from school. Again, so if you're able, willing, and want to volunteer, think of it as volunteering and want to come work for us so we can get over this hump, it would be greatly appreciated. Things are going well. We're just struggling with some of the things that we take for granted along the way. So, Mr. Parentano, that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. That'll bring us to our first period of public comment. The Board Secretary will call speakers to the podium. You will have three minutes to speak. Please direct your comments directly to the Board, state your name, area for which you live in, and your occupation. Please no personal tax. And as per Policy 903, our public speaking policy, only resident and resident taxpayers in Neshamene school districts are allowed to address the School Board at the podium. All others that are non-residents, non-taxpayers in a Neshamene school district, if you wish to submit questions and writings to the Office of the Superintendent, it will be shared with the Board members. Call our first speaker, please.
Number one, Joshua Thomas.
Hello, Joshua Thomas, Langhorne resident and carpet cleaner. I just had two questions. One was if October, I believe it was October 4th, if that's out the window because of the governor for the mask optional. And the other one was, my other family members go to Council Rock, and they had a parent exemption form where the parent actually signed for the kids to not wear the mask. I don't know if that's possible to implement that same policy for Neshamene. And those are my two questions. Thank you.
Thank you. The Board will address them in the Board Comment section of the meeting.
Hi, Carrie DeGregorio. I live in Feasterville, and I am an IT training coordinator. Hello, school members. My name is Carrie DeGregorio, and I'm a resident of Lower Southampton. I have two children that attend Neshamene schools, one at the high school and one at Pitt Questing. I emailed you all last night about the Core Swim Team, and I hope you had had a chance to read that. The parents of Core Swimmers are very disappointed that we may not be able to move forward with the start of practices. We were just emailed yesterday about this and then found out we had a School Board meeting tonight. This did not give parents time to make other plans for their children so they could attend this meeting and voice their concerns. It would have been nice for us to have a week of preparation so that we could have had more parents at this School Board meeting. Our swimmers have not had a Core season for three seasons, two summers and one winter. This means our kids have been out of swim for over a year and a half, where other teams in the area have continued to practice without disruption. Our kids are being set up for failure as they will not be able to perform at the other team's level. For instance, our neighboring school district Centennial is starting practices next week and have implemented effective safety measures. It does not make sense that Neshamene schools are holding tryouts for all their sports, yet we may not be able to move forward with Core. Like I said in my email to you, there are several safety measures we can put in place. They are as follows. These are my suggestions. Number one, only open Core to Neshamene residents. By doing this, we could keep track of contact tracing, as all of the Neshamene schools are doing this. If a student was exposed or has COVID, they will obviously not be able to attend the practices. Number two, stagger practices so that there are not as many swimmers at each practice. Young kids, 5 to 6; middle school, 6 to 7. Swimmers are not able to use the locker rooms to change. Swimmers must come with their suits on and will not be permitted to change. My son, who swims for both the high school and Core, did this last year during high school swim. It did not seem to be an issue with any of the swimmers to not have the locker rooms to change in. Open the back door to the pool for entrance and exit to practice. Once again, this is how the high school did it last season. And also check for fevers at the door. High school did this last year, and not one student had COVID all season. In addition, most of the high school and some middle school students are now vaccinated, which they weren't at this time last year. I don't think so. Centennial School District has a safety plan similar to what I just presented. I'm happy to read that to you. I have that as well. I don't know how much time I have left. I do have two other letters from Core parents that couldn't be here. So the first letter says, this is from Robin Shamelon.
You have 15 seconds.
Okay, then.
There's a second period if you want to.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No further.
No further. All right. All right, that brings us to Section 2. There is no Board action items this evening. Items for approval at our next public board meeting will be Maple Point Elementary School Project Reaffirmation, Bucks County Technical High School Lease Agreement and Bond Issue, SOS Group Contract Renewal, Overnight Trips, Pre-K Counts Partnership Agreement Renewal, Student Settlement Agreements. Brings us to Section 4, our committee reports, Business Operations. Mrs. Hollenback, would you also do Facilities as well, please?
Sure.
As far as the upcoming meetings.
Yep. The Business Operations Committee actually met yesterday here at 6:30. We discussed a variety of topics, and we're starting to get more involved with Facilities as well. So the next Facilities meeting is actually going to be next Monday, September 20th. It's going to be here at 6:30. We're going to be discussing the new proposal for the elementary school on this site, as well as an update on the Fields project at the high school, as well as the upgrades that are going on here. We will also be having a meeting October 13th, which is a combo meeting for Facilities and for Business Operations to talk about the financing of said projects. And the next Business Operations meeting is November 16th, which is 6:30 here, and that will be primarily to discuss the budget for the following year. Thank you.
Thank you. Educational development is usually handled by Mrs. Bowman.
I have that.
Do you have that as well?
Yes.
All righty. Go right ahead, please.
The Educational Development meeting, the next one, is next Tuesday, September 21st, 6:30 here in this location. The comprehensive plan will be presented during this meeting. So lots of meetings coming up. Everybody should come out and see all the great things that we're trying to get done here at Neshamene. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenback. Ms. Boyle, would you please do Policy?
Okay. The next policy meeting is going to be October 19th, right here in the District Boardroom at 6:30.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. Mr. Sullivan usually does Facilities and Planning. Mrs. Hollenback already read the dates. We will be discussing the Maple Point Elementary proposed project, as well as the Neshamene High School proposed Fields project, as well as our normal criteria of follows-up on the maintenance and projects that have been taking place during the summer at our facilities. And as Mrs. Bowman stated, that will be next Monday, 9:20, 6:30 in this room. That'll bring us to our representative reports, Section 5. Mr. Cirillo, the IU Board.
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. The IU Board is busy as always. They are open for in-person learning, as they were all last year, meeting all the protocols and all the guidance that is required. Another piece of information, the IU is now the official host to Region 8 for Education for Children and Youth Experiencing Homelessness Program. Region 8 in Pennsylvania consists of Bucks, Delaware, Montgomery, Lehigh, and Northampton There are roughly 5,000 homeless students in those counties, 713 of which originate from Bucks County. And the IU is very proud to support, to be the regional support to the local schools in the five county regions, to help meet the needs of students experiencing homelessness. Also, Dr. McGee believed sent out an email to the community about a free rapid COVID-19 testing site that the Bucks County IU is facilitating on behalf of Bucks County, the county itself, people who are eligible. If you didn't read the email, it is Bucks County school employees and contractors, as well as schoolchildren within the county. You do need an appointment for that, and the children to be tested actually have to be exhibiting systems and symptoms, and it is being held at the intermediate unit office in Doylestown. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cirillo. Mrs. Boyle, Neshamene Education Foundation?
The Neshamene Education Foundation will be meeting on Monday, September 20th, 4:00 p.m. in the District Boardroom at Maple Point Middle School. The foundation is focusing on alumni outreach efforts this fall and is currently holding an Eagles Town Ticket Raffle. Foundation volunteers will be at Neshamene High School Homecoming on Saturday, September 25th, and all Neshamene fans and alumni are encouraged to stop by and say hello.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. PSBA liaison is myself. Currently, the PSBA is working with the state officials and the PDE on COVID mitigation, trying to make sure that the plans that are implemented are trying to shift towards a more individualized and a one-size-fits-all method. As we experienced here with Neshamene last year, we were able to work individually with the Bucks County Department of Health, and it was very successful in our students coming back to school when other counties, like Montgomery County, kids were home, our kids were in school. We want to make sure that we avoid the necessity to over-quarantine students. We don't want to be in a situation where we're sending too many students home unnecessarily. We hope that the PSBA's representatives will be successful with working with the state to try and refine the plans. I can tell you that we're not very happy with the way the guidance and the direction is right now from the state, but we're bound by them. Until things change, as far as the authority of the Pennsylvania Department of Health Directive, we will need to follow them, and we will do so as sworn officers of the Commonwealth. Other than that, we have discussions on the SRS III money that's being distributed, even though the state has received it. Very little of that money has yet been distributed to school districts, and they're working with the Department of Education to try and expedite those payments to our districts. So that's all I have. Mr. Allen, Technical School.
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. The Bucks County Joint Board, the Technical School Board, met August 30th, 7:30. We were given a presentation of the classroom readiness and the shop readiness. They were cleaned and disinfected over the summer. And as you can imagine, our major discussion was over the health and safety plan presented to the tech board. It was originally, for full disclosure, it was originally going to be a mandate on masks. Ms. Bowman and I, self, and a number of other districts argued the point that the level of maturity we were hoping to instill in our high school students, especially understanding that if the COVID numbers rose, this option would be taken off the table, that they were recommending, we recommended, they would wear masks as opposed to mandating it. There was quite a spirited discussion over that. The end of that was we agreed to a compromise of following the recommendation of the Bucks County Board of Health locally here, watching the numbers here, and what he agreed would keep us in school best. As you all know, the governor, the day after we made that arrangement, the governor came out with his edict and made that null and void. But I did want to give you an update on that. We tried, Ms. Bowman, myself, tried to have the tech board, you know, our vote reflect our vote here at Neshamene, which was to try to keep it optional to high school. The understanding that, you know, and I'll go a bit on this, we're trying to prepare these, these are high school-age students. They're almost out the door. Some of them will be going overseas in the military. And it felt, at some point, we have to ask them to make decisions pertaining to the good of the Commonwealth. And taking that option away from them, I felt was a teaching moment lost. And that's how I crafted my argument to the tech board. Other than that, as I said, that was taken out of all of our hands by Harrisburg. The next meeting will be September 27th at 7:30, and I expect we will be giving further updates on the construction projects that are in the pipeline for renovations and improvements over to tech building. And that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Very well presented. Okay, that will move us to our second period of public comment. The same rules apply. You have three minutes. Approach the podium. You can just approach the podium at will. We don't call names for second period. And state your name, area in which you live, your occupation, and please no personal tax. Does anybody wish to approach the podium for second period of public comment?
Once again, I'm Carrie DeGregorio. I live in Feasterville, and I'm a technical training coordinator. I just wanted to read two letters that Neshamene Core parents sent me because they weren't able to make it to this meeting. This is from Robin Shamleon. Her children also attend Core. I'm asking you to please consider letting the children swim with the Core team this year. My son is fortunate to swim one season for the team just prior to COVID, and he has developed a love for swimming since. The program was fun and inspiring. Swimming is the only sport he has ever enjoyed and actually wants to continue. This program is so valuable for the children, and it would be terrible if they missed another year. While COVID is very serious, and I really appreciate the precautions that are being made to protect the children, there must be some way we can figure out how to conduct the team in a safe way. Many other teams have safely conducted a team. There has to be a way that the Core team can also swim safely. With each passing year, with the team closed, we will lose more and more kids eventually not having enough for a team. Even if you feel it isn't safe for swim meets, just having practices or scrimmages would be nice. Please consider the Core team and letting them swim this year. So that was one parent that sent me a letter, and then I have another one here. This is Amber Hicks. Her son also attends Core in Neshamene. They're all Neshamene parents, too, by the way. I'm sad to hear that there is a possibility these kids won't be able to swim. If I can make a suggestion so the kids can still swim and be as safe as they can be. Maybe they can have high school practice as normal. And then she goes through the times, 5 to 45 little kids, just like I was suggesting. As for the competitions, we would swim at home, and the other team would swim at their pool. Each team times, and both teams submit all times, and that's how you will get the final. We did summer swim at Bustleton, and everything worked out. Also, my son played travel baseball for the last two months, and everything was fine. Hopefully, we will be able to come up with a solution so that they can continue to do what they love. And that was Amber Hicks. And I just wanted to add one more thing, that Pitt Questing Middle School has a pretty new ventilation system that was put in two, three years ago, so I could imagine that would help with any kind of germs and things like that. So, yep, thank you.
Anyone else want to approach the podium for the comment? Seeing none, we're going to move to a board comment. Dr. McGee, do you have any comments you'd like to add this evening?
Sure. I'll just address some of the questions from my perspective. As far as Core Swimming, our goal is to reevaluate that on October 1st. The primary goal is to keep our schools open, based on the case level, based on our staffing. Also involves custodians. I mentioned bus drivers, IA, and security. That's all part of the package. And then, right now, there are no outside organizations using our facilities indoors. Once we provide access to one outside organization, we're obligated by the Equal Access Clause of the United States Constitution to provide that access to all. So when we go here, when we make this step, the gyms come back into play for all the basketball organizations from the community, so we have to make sure that we're able to do this. So we want to do it. We need a couple more weeks to make sure we have the custodian, we have the security, we have the case levels that we're able to keep our rooms clean, et cetera. So we understand, and I ask for a couple more weeks. To Mr. Thomas's questions, October 4th masks, the state, the Acting Director of the Department of Health, from my view and those I consult with overseas or trumps, for lack of a better word, the Board's order. So my recommendation to the Board will be to follow those orders until overturned otherwise. So I'm a commissioned officer of the county, obligated to follow them. The Board is also commissioned officers as elected officials. They're obligated to follow them, too. And then, based on the advice of our solicitor, they can make a decision one way or the other. So that particular order presently supersedes our health and safety plan. Okay? The second thing was the neighboring district who's allowing parents to opt out with a signature. In my view, that's not the intent of the state. The state's been very, the intent is that we follow a process where, how we document a child with a disability and come up with accommodations. Neshamene isn't even going that far by just asking for a doctor's note. So I'm already doing somewhat less than what the state's intent is. So the Board may act on that as well, but that's not my recommendation. Okay? I think I've answered all the questions that...
Any other member want to make any public comment?
I just had a question for Dr. McGee. When was the swimming supposed to start?
I assume somewhere in the summer, we were going back to pre-pandemic conditions, and things started falling apart. So we have not approved anyone. So I assume, and they can probably answer the question, sometime earlier in September, around this time, normal swimming. And there probably would have been swimming over the summer. There's probably community swim on Saturdays, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
And we're not having that either.
We don't have, the only people using our facilities indoors would be the high school or middle school athletic programs. So our high school swim team is permitted to do offseason workouts. It's just the outside community groups that we've kept, as we did last year, to make sure we could keep our schools open. So we're hoping that two weeks find us stable, well-staffed, and able to say yes. And yes is bigger than just Core Swimming.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone? Anyone else? Anyone else? Mr. Allen, please.
Yes, I just want to take a few minutes just to welcome everyone back to the Nishamani School District for the 2021 school year, or 2122 school year, sorry. Last year didn't count. The year before, that didn't count. It's all blur. But again, everyone, all the staff who have worked hard over the summer to prepare the buildings and prepare our programs for our students coming back in, I just wanted to say that we greatly appreciate it. I think I speak for all the board, and I'm sure many of the parents too, who appreciate having their kids out from under and out into the buildings. And I do want to ask that we have some patience while we straighten out the transportation issues. I'm sure you're aware that all the surrounding districts, all throughout the nation, are having issues with getting drivers. We, of course, are doing our level best to get that squared away. And I assure you, you're losing patience, we lose patience, but we all need to remain calm. We are working on it, and try and respect each other out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I'll just finish up very quickly, just to echo Dr. McGee's comments about Core swimming. This isn't the first time the issues come up. It's come up before. We want to do nothing better than to open our facilities back up to our community, our taxpayers, our residents. At this stage, I have to agree with everything that Dr. McGee said. It's just too early for us to do it right now. We need to get a handle and make sure we're not seeing a spread. Once we're sure we're not seeing the spread, then we got to get our staffing to the level that it needs to be. We're doing pretty good with staffing, but it's still not where it needs to be yet. So, you know, not one day sooner, not one day later, you know, we want to get all these programs. It's just not Core, it's the basketball teams, it's the wrestling program. It's everything that requires our indoor facilities and gyms. So, it is on our radar. It's just not something that Dr. McGee feels he can do effectively and properly at this stage, and we have discussed it, and we're all in agreement with Dr. McGee's position. As Mr. Thomas stated, Dr. McGee covered that perfectly. I've spoken to other districts that have used the so-called parent exemption form. I've spoken to our solicitor about it. I've spoken to the PSBA people about it. I've read the guidance that's come down from the PDE, from the government order, and those parent exemption forms, in our solicitor's opinion, plus in our administration's opinion, in my opinion, do not meet the level of the guidance that we're getting from the PDE on what those forms have to be. While Dr. McGee mentioned that they have, they should follow our policy, which is for 504 and IDEA plans, which is a much more extensive process. We're just requiring a medical doctor's note, which we feel is the minimum required to meet the guidance that we've gotten from the PDE that was last Friday or the Friday before. I forget which one it was that guidance came out.
I have no recollection.
You're right.
It was a Friday.
It was a Friday that that guidance came out. So, that's what we're going to stick in with. As I said, last meeting, I'm fully committed to having our individual plan that we all voted on and agreed to, which was a mask optional plan, be reinstated until the state either changes their guidance or until their authority is invalidated by a court. We are bound by that decision, and we are not going to take on that legal fight by ourselves to fight the state's authority on it. There are some districts that are doing it, some out west that are doing it, and I believe there's a hearing either September 15th or 16th. There's going to be a hearing in Commonwealth Court. We'll see what comes from that. But I would like nothing better to get back to a plan that's designed for Nishamani to fit Nishamani's needs. And I'm also hoping that as this progresses, the Bucks County commissioners will allow, once again, the individuality that we experienced last year, working directly with the Department of Health, to find individual plans that meet our student body. This, I'm very concerned, as I know the administration is, that we may be placed in a position where, like last year, until we were able to get authorized for modified quarantine by Dr. Dampser, that, you know, some days we were sending home 125 kids a day. So, we don't want to see that happen. The idea is these kids need to be in school, in their seats. That's the best place for them to learn. For those that can't be there, we'll do our best to accommodate them, but keeping schools open is our number-one primary concern, and that's what Dr. McGee and his staff is working on every day to make sure we have the most kids. Very pleased with the initial attendance reports. Most schools are at the same levels they were pre-pandemic for attendance, so we're getting off to a great start. We want to keep it that way and keep these kids in school. So, I thank you all for coming out and sharing your concerns. Hearing nothing from the other board members, a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Thank you all. I'm sorry, we didn't vote on that. All in favor? All right. Thank you all.